Good evening, and I'd like to welcome everyone to the Monroe County Public Library Board of Trustees. We're going to start with our public hearing for an additional appropriation, so I'd like to call that meeting to order. So we will start with Gary Lutler giving us an update on the public hearing.
So, we are making this additional appropriation request for two reasons. The first is the $4 million request for the Rainy Day Fund authorizes the spending of the funds that have been accumulated for the Southwest Branch project. And then the second reason for the request is the general fund request for $613,000. It's related to the DLGF decision not to approve the budget that was approved by the Library Board in 2023. And so this request is to restore the operating fund spending levels to what the library had originally budgeted for 2023. So, tonight, we're asking the Board to approve this resolution, and we are opening up to the public any questions or comments that they might have. And, we're opening it up to the Board for any questions.
Do we have any further questions or comments? Do we have a motion to approve the additional appropriation for the library?
So moved.
Oh, second.
Okay, all those in favor of approving the additional appropriation for Monroe County Public Library signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. And since that is our only item on this.
And then the next step in this process is the April 11th, it'll go to the County Council for their approval.
Okay, thank you. Yes, do we have any public comment at this time for our finance meeting? I'm sorry, the public hearing for the additional appropriations? Seeing none, all those, do I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing for additional appropriation meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of adjourning this meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. This meeting's adjourned. Then, we will go ahead and flip over the agenda and begin our normal monthly meeting. So this is the Monroe County Public Library Board of Trustees' March meeting. So we're going to begin by going around and introducing ourselves and sharing something we're reading if you would care to do so. Fred, how about if we start with you today?
Hi, I'm Fred Reissinger, and I just finished a book on world history that I have to bring to the library. I left it on the desk at home, but it was great.
I am Kari Essery, and I am about to begin a newly minted book on comprehension strategies.
I'm excited, actually.
Jamie Burkhart, and I've actually just started listening to The Night Watchman. Over break.
I'm Greer Carson. I am rereading Mortal Questions by Thomas Nagel, which is an old favorite. And my family and I are playing Whoa Long: Fallen Dynasty for the Xbox, while we dearly wish we could play Chia for the PS5, which I strongly recommend for anyone who's interested in open world platformers.
That's supposed to be fantastic.
Yes, it looks amazing.
I'm Chris Harrison, and I'm currently listening to Market the Plague by Kevin Sands.
I'm David Ferguson. I'm currently listening to Nine Parts of Desire. It's a book about Islamic women.
My name is Nichelle Wash, and I'm reading The Power of Keeping Your Mouth Shut in a World That Won't Stop Talking by Dan Lyons. I'm feeling convicted.
Kathy Loser, and I'm reading the book The Swimmers. It's won several awards, and it's by Julie Otsuka.
Okay, thank you all. We'll begin our evening with the consent agenda items. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda items, which include the minutes of the February 15th board meeting, monthly financial report, monthly bills for payment, the personnel report, and the board meeting calendar?
So moved.
Second.
And do we have any questions or comments about the consent agenda items?
I had one question on the budget, on the employer, it's employee benefits, insurance, it looks like the employer's contribution to insurance. So, February, this February is much higher than last February, and it looks like 2023 is much higher than '22. Was there an extra payment somewhere, or?
What page are you on, David?
I am on page 14, and it's under Employee Benefits, and it's line 1240. February of '23 was $90,000, where February of '22 was $19,000. So it's four and a half times as much, but then, and when you look at the total year, or year-to-date, which isn't, it's only a couple months, it's $221,000 for '23, but only $148,000 for '22 at the same time.
What I'd like to do on that is get you an answer and send it to you.
Okay, that's fine.
I assume it was probably an extra payment somewhere, or something timeliness.
Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda items signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. And next, we'll turn things over to Greer for our monthly director's report.
Thank you. Okay, so overall, collection use for February was consistent with previous year's use at this time. On balance, we're still kind of climbing our way out of the pandemic in terms of seeing an eventual return to pre-2020 collection use. February's featured e-library resource was the newly acquired Black Life in America, which garnered a 463% page view increase from January to February. Communications and marketing focused much of their February marketing efforts on Black History Month and Library Lovers Month. Our top Facebook posts were "What's Your Favorite Book by a Black Author?", which saw a reach of 6,518 with 140 comments, and "What's the Last Book You Couldn't Make Yourself Finish?", which saw a reach of 3,418 with 58 comments. And our Twitter impressions were up significantly due to a very popular tweet about our video game station's monthly title Florence, which was actually retweeted by the game's publisher. We are excited to begin implementation of a new volunteer management system, Better Impact, which has impressed our volunteer coordination teams and comes highly recommended by peer organizations. And just to share a very minor but positive note on our monthly patron comments, there were no complaints received for the month of February. I'm not sure if we've had that before. Of course, our complaints are always constructive, but it's nice to see that we didn't have any. So, happy to answer any questions.
Do you have anything for Greer? All right, then we will go ahead and move on to old business. And underneath us, we're going to turn things over to Greer again for some updates on our Southwest Branch.
So we are currently installing all the ceiling tiles, restroom tiles, and interior glass throughout the space. The exterior glass has been installed, which means that the northeast and south-facing views are visible, and as grand as we had hoped. Opening day collection work is completed, so all of our books and materials are scheduled for delivery in early May. The stonework for the outdoor amphitheater will begin this week and next. Our substantial completion and move-in schedule has been coordinated and confirmed and begins April 28th with our first punch list, followed by shelving installation, furniture delivery, and technology installation. May will also find us hosting about a dozen VIP tours of the space, beginning with our staff and our trustees, our friends of the Library Board members, partners from area schools and government entities, and even some alumni staff. We expect a few final change orders for next month's meeting, specific to the temporary heating issue from back in December and January, and some minor bulkhead and ventilation adjustments in the building. And we are in the process of hiring for our Southwest Branch manager, and will begin hiring for Southwest librarian and library assistant positions within the next two weeks. And of course, the big news is that our grand opening date is indeed Friday, June 9th. We look forward to holding a wonderful grand opening celebration for the public that day, including food, performances, tours, and of course, lots of use of the building and checking out of materials. And we will then begin normal hours of operations on Saturday, June 10th. Any questions?
Are you getting nervous yet?
I've been nervous for months. Yeah, now that all the glass is up?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm nervous.
Wow.
But it's remarkable being inside the building, yeah.
Good stuff, good job.
Yeah.
Well, I'm sure we all look forward to getting our tour.
I'm very excited for that as well.
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Any more questions or comments for Greer? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to our new business. And the first item on the new business, under new business, is an update to the bereavement leave policy for staff that work more than 20, that 20 or more hours per week. Do we have a motion to approve the bereavement leave changes?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, and Kyle's going to give us a rundown of this update.
Hi, I'm Kyle Wickemire-Harty, and actually, what's old is new again, or the other way around. This is return of our bereavement leave to the way it was prior to our 2010 labor management agreement. There was a lot of misunderstandings of what this was about. So we're back to all benefited staff having accessed up to five days of leave, dependent on individual need, involvement in funeral, planning, travel, and other circumstances. And so, these policies, the policy changes have been updated, pardon me, reviewed by a labor management committee and the leadership group, and there were no changes. I do have one notation on the paragraph that includes, at the end of this, people may request additional benefit leave if needed, with the approval of the library director, and we need to cross out, or associate directors, since that position no longer exists. So that's the only adjustment. Yes?
I'm very glad to hear that they can get with the directors, just because this year I happen to have a mother-in-law die, a sister-in-law die, and it was all far away. So you just never know.
No, you don't. And some people have to travel, or they're more involved, and so we try to take those on a case-by-case basis.
So it's five days per person? So like, if your mother dies, you have five days. Is that correct?
Yes, but you can also ask for additional if necessary.
Okay, but normally, you have a total of 10, depending on if Uncle Harry dies, and so on and so forth.
Exactly.
But I'm glad to hear that that caveat is there, just.
Does this include death of a child, like, in a pregnancy, so like a miscarriage?
I would, you know, that would something that we'd probably take in our advisement. It's not on the exact list, everything, because it's a child of a child, but because if it's a grandchild, or something, your own child.
If you miscarry, would you be able to use bereavement?
Yeah, I don't, we don't even have to get that detailed in this. That would be approved.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments for Kyle?
Okay, all those in favor of approving the updates to the bereavement policy signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Thank you very much, Kyle.
Thank you.
Next, I'm going to go ahead and give an update or a recommendation based on the board subcommittee that was formed to discuss a proposed financial gift. So hopefully, all of you had a chance to read through the letter from the family that is offering to donate items to our Southwest Branch. When I met, so, can we speak to anything about specifics or not, yet?
Not about the family specifically, but the project certainly.
The project, okay, I just want to make sure. I'm like, talking too hypothetically, that gets a little confusing. So, we've had a donor come through, come to us, offering to donate money towards our labyrinth and outdoor amphitheater for the Southwest Branch. And, so after meeting with the subcommittee, which was Kathy Loser and Jamie Burkhart and myself, Jamie asked some great questions about some, just some language in the letter, and so we changed it to match a little bit more closely to our naming policy that we approved earlier, or late, or some last year. And so at this time, the board, the subcommittee recommends moving forward with this donation and naming the outdoor amphitheater and the labyrinth according to the family's wishes. But, do we have questions or comments, or, again, I guess, we can't speak too, too much more in detail, but that at least gives you some ideas. We will bring forth an actual vote to the Board next month. Okay, all right. Then moving on, we have Gary to talk to us about some surplus items. Do we have a motion to approve the disposal of some surplus items?
So moved.
Oh, second.
Okay, and Gary will update us on those items.
So we have several technology-related items here that, as you can see, the year purchased was 2017, so it's obsolescence, they're being replaced, and we need to clear them out. Any questions?
All those in favor of approving the disposal of certain, declaring certain items, certain property items surplus signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Okay, and finally, we have just an update from Greer and Josh regarding strategic planning team and an ex-officio board member participation on this team.
I do have one question.
Oh, yeah.
On the surplus, I see a network storage raid array with hard drives. It says with HDs. I assume that means hard drives. So, how do you dispose of that?
Meaning because there's data on them, and how do we wipe them? Yeah, let me get back to you on that. I'll ask Ned, our IT manager.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that somebody was thinking.
That we're not just selling a hard drive.
Yeah, and I don't know what's on it. I mean, yeah, I don't know what kind of data's on it.
We do, I mean, that, our typical practice is to wipe all storage devices before we do anything with them, but let me check on that one in particular.
I mean, I suppose the same admonition would go with all these iPad minis.
The same thing we do with the iPads, yeah. But let me double-check on that, on that hard drive as well.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Josh, are you going to share with us about the?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry, so I was going to say very quickly that, so this year, 2023, is the final year of our current strategic plan. Libraries typically do either a three-year or a five-year strategic plan. We are looking to do another three-year plan for 2024 and 2026, with the likelihood of looking at a larger five-year plan next time around, when we're sort of into being a three-branch system and so on. So Josh Wolfe has led a number of our strategic planning teams over the years, and he's going to help with this year's team as well, and is here tonight to share some details about the process and board involvement and next steps.
Thank you. It's really, it's wild for me to be here, because it forced me to look back at 2020 in the spring and summer, when we forged the strategic plan that's ending right now, and it were heady days. We felt at that time that community dialogue was at a standstill, and then all of this input just came pouring in, idea after idea that led to the growth of our Library of Things, the teaching kitchen that's going in. So, and Chris was there for all of it. So we're just now at the stage of forming our team. We'll convene our first meeting in early May, during which we're going to outline our charge, our action plan, community partner list, service priorities, stuff like that. By the middle of June, we should have a draft survey and community input plan for the leadership team to review. Then in late June through July, we'll be gathering our input from the community. August and September, we'll analyze our data, identify goals and actions for the plan. We'll also revisit our mission, vision, and values to see how well they've kept up with the times. And then in December, we'll bring this finished plan to the Board for approval, so that we can submit it to the State Library in January, along with a new action plan for the year. It's always been our practice, as Greer said, to include a member of the Board of Trustees on our team, provide input and expertise. So once again, we're asking you guys to consider if you want to join us on this adventure. It is a compressed timeframe. It does span the summer, and then heats up with really a lot of discussions in the early fall. So we're looking at a few months. You don't have to decide right now, obviously, but if you're interested, reach out to Greer or me. We could give you an inside sort of window into what's involved in it. But it's an exciting time, and it will shape our service priorities and some of the big things we'll be doing in the coming years. It's good that we're doing a three-year plan, because with the new branch and everything changing so fast, we want, we're really looking to put a nimble plan together, identify some new areas of the community to talk to, look out, hear some new voices and some new stories.
Josh, do you remember how often we met in 2020 when we were building this plan?
Between once and twice a month, and we, we can be really flexible about that. So we'll probably have like an eight-to-10-person staff team, and we'll meet in subgroups and then kind of go out. We're really, each phase of it doesn't always have to involve the entire team. Yeah, thanks, that's a great question. Yeah, if you've got questions about time commitments, we could definitely be flexible about that.
And one other piece to share is a lot of libraries doing a five-year plan, where we'll hire an external consultant to guide them through the process, which is appropriate, but we think not appropriate for a three-year plan, so we don't plan to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Any other questions or comments?
When do we need to let you know if we'd be interested?
So we do want to convene the first team meeting probably in early May. So if you could, if we could really hammer it down by mid to late April, that'd be ideal.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you so much, Josh. Okay, now it's time in our meeting for our department update, and we're going to hear from Teen Services. And Sam Ott, our Teen Services Manager, is going to do the presentation. Welcome, Sam.
One moment while I get the technology plugged in.
While Sam's getting set up, I'll just share, Sam's been a longtime teen librarian here at MCPL, and has a lot of really strong connections with area schools, teachers, students, families, and moved into the manager position, oh, I don't know, about a year ago, right?
A year ago, two weeks ago.
That was really close.
Yeah, really close. As I made this presentation, it was a little wild, looking back and realizing that this had just happened a year ago. It hasn't felt like a year. It's felt like a very brisk four months. But as Greer said, I'm Sam, I'm the Teen Services Manager, and I'm going to walk you through a little bit of our philosophy, our staff, and some of the programs we've done, and I do have pictures, so it's not just going to be, you know, theater of the mind. I'm sure you know, Teen Services provides a dynamic and supportive after-school environment. We have 25 to 35 kids who use the space every day after school, and about half of those are regulars who we see consistently throughout the week and use the space to de-stress, hang out with friends, play video games, attend our programs, but also use a lot of the supplies that we offer in the space, including things like our button maker, jewelry kit, or other things like that, that they wouldn't really have access to a lot of other times, so they can really only use those supplies when they're in our space. We also support the reading lives of teens and their families through our collection, readers advisory, and book lists. And then we also go on a lot of outreach visits to local schools and youth-serving agencies. And then as a part of that, we've also noticed, this year especially, that a lot of our regulars are bringing in their friends to the space for the first time, and they're like, "No, no, no, you don't need to tour us around. I'll show my friends the space." And it's really cool to see that level of ownership over the space, and to see that they're the best advocates for the ground floor in the community. The other thing we work really hard to do is making sure that the ground floor is a safe community space for the teens, and that it's one that they feel supported in, and we try to do that through our collection, our programs, our space, but also, most importantly, our staff, because they are the key protective factors for our most at-risk teens, and we really want to make sure that they feel welcome, both in the library, but particularly in the ground floor. And it's a space where they can be themselves without fear, and really get to know everybody that's in the space, but also the staff that are present. And these services are a key part of the library's mission to provide free and equitable access, and myself and my staff are really grateful that we can be a part of that and serve the teens of Monroe County in that way. So, speaking of my staff, these are the five core staff. We're only a department of six, plus a few 20 percenters who rotate in one day a week from other departments. Laura Wise is over there on the left. She's one of the library assistants who runs a lot of our 3D printing and role-playing game programming, like D and D. Tana Hendricks is one of our teen librarians, who does a lot of our book club programming and art programming. Claire Spence just got hired on in December and is also falling in headfirst, and does a lot of craft, cosplay, and additional D and D program, which I'll talk about later, but we've doubled our offerings, and all of those are still full. So that's really a big need in the space. Fern has been at the library almost as long as me, I think six years, and does a lot of the social media management for the ground floor, but also programming and art, and has really been instrumental in the book collection as well. And Danny Price just got, during the IA to LA promotion, he came on there, and he is going to be doing a lot of RPG and craft programming as well, and is going to take over projects such as shared inventory management with Children's and Adult Services, which will be really great.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Yeah.
What's the difference between a library assistant and a librarian?
So, a lot of that is related to job duties. So the librarians set a lot of the priorities. They develop the programming, and then the LAS can come and say, "Hey, I'd like to do this," and the librarian will support them. But they more traditionally operate in that support capacity. I don't know if Greer, if you wanted to add anything?
The only other thing I would add is that library assistants don't have to have an MLS or an MIS, and so you can have all kinds of educational backgrounds, or be at different points in your career. And librarians, obviously, are MLS and certified.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And so as a part of this, we're also, we try to collaborate a lot with the Ellisville Teen Services space as well. We're working with Macklin and the staff out there. We do that by swapping program ideas, so that we can co-purchase supplies, so that way we are, you know, using our resources well. We also support each other during our after-hours events, such as the Large Dances we do, or we rotate after-hours locations between downtown and Ellisville, so that way each space isn't being used all the time, but also teens in each area have access to those events. And I hope that something like that also exists with Southwest, where we'll have that rotation and that collaboration as well. Programs, this is definitely the bulk of the work that we do, mainly because it's such a great way for the teens to have fun, build community, but also have opportunities for engagement with people they might not have met. The one on your left there, my right, your left, is a program called Blood on the Clock Tower. It is a murder mystery event that is run by a group in town, and they normally do it for adults, but Tiana was able to reach out to them, and they run a version for teens, so they're a local group that comes in. And we do it once every program cycle, and the kids really like it. And it's actually arisen a program now where Tana has written her own murder mystery programs, and is leading those in the space, and those have been very, very popular, and she's doing a new one this summer. She was just writing the poetry-based clues for it when I left the space for this. This is a photo from our Zombie Prom program. We did, it was Zombie Prom: A Night to Dismember. Yeah, I'll work in a pun any way I can. We had over 70 kids arrive for that on a Friday night, which is really, really great. They've asked for more, and later in April, we're going to be doing a masquerade ball, because that's the one they wanted next. And so I'm really excited for that, and hope for the same level of attendance. We're doing prep programming right now for it to do masquerade mask-making events during some of our cosplaying art programs, and we'll have all of that available during the event as well. Here's our D and D club event. Laura's leading that with some of the folks there. This is really interesting, and I'll point it out, because there are three different school systems and two homeschool families represented here, who might never have met, except for these programs. And D and D was actually the first official program. We restarted after the pandemic lightened up enough for us to do programming via Discord, and it was the first thing that really built that community. And like I said, now we offer three sessions a month through Laura, and three sessions through Claire, and all of them have eight attendees, which is where we try to cap it for group management, and for everybody to feel like they get, you know, a hand on the ball during the event. Book Talk is an event that Tiana runs. It's based on the really popular social media trend. So she picks a different book, and everybody can flip through it or not, and just show up about their feelings about the book, the adaptation, or whatever else is going on. But that's been proven to be really successful as well, and again, you're going to notice a lot of different school system representation there. And again, you're going to notice a lot of different school system representation there. The Holiday Karaoke Event was just something very silly and fun that the teens wanted to do, and there's Kate led that with me, and all the kids just went to the back and wanted to have a chance to share their favorite songs. I also participated, but I will not show you that video footage. Nobody needs that. Yeah, I don't know.
I don't think we need that.
Greer, please don't, please don't. Oh, no. The 3D printing program is Laura here. This is really fun because we were able to, when Teen Services split off from Level Up and they got their new printers, we were able to take the old printer and utilize that for library programming, so the kids would still have access to that. And so we run this a program monthly where they, Laura will make some little thing that they can modify pretty easily, but then they can also learn about the principles of Tinkercad and 3D modeling and support, so they can add their own features to it. And that's been really fun to see, and also kind of horrifying to see what the kids want to end up making, where they'll add weird hands or faces to stuff, and you don't want that there. But it's okay. I think it's cool. The Von Rats is really cute and just an example of the ownership that teens have taken over the space. Somebody donated years ago these two little rats, and two teens donated little crocheted capes for them, and they constructed a whole fantasy series about how they had fallen in love and gotten married. So staff actually took them on a honeymoon around Bloomington and took photos with them in the space. They made a little workbook out of it, and then we had a wedding reception for them.
Are they real rats?
No, they're plastic. No, no, we're not, no. That would, I would not, no. And we had a wedding reception for them there, and we had 20 teens arrive for that. One teen actually wrote and performed a song on ukulele for it, and they check in on the rats regularly. So that's just an example of like what happens in the space through natural evolution. And then this was a Valentine's and Palanctines Day party that we did in 1B, 1C, where we wanted to have teens on Valentine's Day who might not have opportunity to go out in town, but also might not have dates, have a chance to show up, have some food, and hang out with other people. And then we watched some TV and did a really fun photo booth program during that. And we had 55 people show up, most of which were from Project School. I think almost all the middle schoolers from TPS showed up for that. The other thing that we do is a lot of outreach. Each month, we go to Bloomington High School North and Tri-North. I worked with Tori Lawhorn at the beginning of the fall semester during email blast to all the area schools, and they were the ones that responded and asked us to show up. And then YSB also comes to the ground floor once a month as well.
What is YSB?
The Youth Services Bureau.
Okay.
Yeah, they come once a month with their students to the space. And then outreach librarian Jen Hoffman and I are going to the Academy of Science and Entrepreneurship later this month to kick off a school-wide book club. We did that last year around the same time for the Jacqueline Woodson visit that was coming, and they read Brown Girl Dreaming. And then in November of 2022, this past year, we actually worked with the Project School on historical eviction assignment, where a lot of us pulled a whole bunch of books for them, and they came, and all 88 of their students were able to select a book from our collection to use for that assignment. We're hoping to replicate that later this semester as well. Looking forward, in April 2023, we're collaborating with Bloomington High School South English teacher Sheila McDermott-Sype to bring poet Kenny Fresh from Indy for a Poetry Month event, which we're really glad that she reached out to us for that. And then moving forward into summer, we're working with Ivy Tech to offer a career exploration series in the ground floor, where people will come and talk about the culinary arts programs, HVAC programs, or welding programs. And the really neat thing is she was able to work with the dean, and all the teens are going to enter in a raffle for each event they attend, and the teen and their caregivers will win a free class at Ivy Tech as a part of that. So really grateful that that happened. And I also pass this information along to Josh Caswell, who's working now as the Emerging Adult Library, and he's hoping to reach out to them and set something up there as well. And then looking at Southwest and Teen Services, I'm really imagining that this will be a Teen Services hub, especially due to the co-location of Bachelor right there. And I know Jackson Creek is just up the street and is going to have a six-foot wide walking path eventually all the way up there as well. And then so that's just two miles for a lot of those kids to make it there. And so my hope would be that the Southwest Branch is able to model a unique level of connection between school staff and the librarians there, so that there can be a lot more interconnection there between teachers, administrators, and the students. And that there are new outdoor programs for teens, because even at Ellisville, with their outdoor space, we don't have a lot of that available, and so there's going to be so many cool opportunities at the new branch to offer those things, walking tours, just general outdoor activities. I would like to see a water balloon fight at some point, but we'll see if that happens. And again, because that whole branch is going to be taken over between 3:30 and 6:00 by teens, I'd really like to see all the staff be supportive of kids and get to know them. So it's not just dedicated Teen Services staff. Everybody in the branch is excited when the kids show up. And then also regular meetings between all the Teen Services librarians to plan events and overall just larger-scale events. I would really love to work to plan an outdoor Renaissance Fair at the new branch someday and see how that would go. I had originally planned to do a mini-convention here at the library in May of 2020, so that never ended up happening, so I'd like to revisit that someday. Greer, I see you're chuckling. Maybe, we'll see.
That'd be amazing. That would be great.
We'll see. The last two things I'll leave you guys with are two pieces of patron feedback. This one is from a parent. I won't read the whole thing. I'll just highlight two parts, the last part of the first paragraph and the first part of the second. "As a parent, I am grateful to have caring young adults that my kid can talk with at this time in their lives. The teen space is also a place where they've had a wide range of friendships and interact with a wider range of people. It is great for them to have practice outside their normal peer group and get exposure to a wider range of kids in the community." And that really hits at what we're trying to do, to give that exposure, especially for kids who during the pandemic really were very isolated for 18 months to two years, that they have that chance to make new friends. The last one, and I'm going to read all of this, is from a teen who aged out last fall. They'd been a regular user of the space, and we frequently had to roll them out every night at nine o'clock because they and their friends would stay the entire time. "Dear wondrous library wizards, there are probably enough words to describe my gratitude for all of you, but unfortunately, I'm not as well-read as you, so I'll stick to saying there aren't enough words. My thanks go out to all of you because the ground floor is nothing short of a second home to me. I've spent the better part of three years here, and there isn't another place in this town, perhaps in this world, that could compare to this space. Some of the most fun times I've had have been here. While the days of D and D with Laura and Tuesday afternoon may be gone from my view, they are memories I will always cherish. Every time I walk through these doors, I feel welcomed, I feel at peace, I feel excited. This place and its people mean more to me than you can imagine, and I am forever grateful to you all." Sorry. That's, that always gets to me. I have a little note where I keep it in my office, but that really illustrates everything for us. So what questions do you have, if any?
So with the, first of all, this is incredibly impressive. I have two questions. One, how old do kids need to be to do this?
Twelve to 19.
Do you want to take a 10-year-old? I have a, okay. I'll try again in two years.
There is a tween program over in children's that they can participate in.
Okay. Okay. We'll talk.
Okay.
And then for that type of feedback, a child who ages out, how do you all keep them engaged once they're gone?
That is an excellent question and something we're working on right now. I had a meeting with Josh Caswell, who's just transitioned, like I mentioned earlier, to that emerging adult role, and we're trying to build a continuous suite of programs that mirror what we offer. But we're also talking through ways that maybe we can have a meeting when kids age out with, between like myself or one of my staff, Josh, and that kid to talk about programs and make those connections. But there was a lot of work going on in 2019 to forge that, but then 2020 and staff departures and exits and transitions really changed a lot of that and slowed that timeline down for us. But it is something we're aware of and trying to make sure we're restarting and keeping strong.
That's great. Even like near-peer mentorship, right? Like someone who loves the program and understands it as deeply as that patron, being able to come back and mentor other kids who may have a hard time adjusting to the space would be awesome.
Yeah, we allow kids, once they are 21, we make them take a year off in the space to come back and mentor, and so there's definitely been a lot of expressed interest from that teen in coming back and especially doing RPG and craft programs.
Awesome.
All right. Thank you all.
I'd like to share one other thing very quickly, if I could. If you have a chance to walk through the space, I encourage you to do so. Something that Sam did very early on when he became manager was give the space a little bit of a facelift with the wall art. I know he's, I say this every time I come downstairs to talk to Sam. It's really exciting to see these very intentionally hung and framed posters of video games and generally teen culture icons that do not come across as dorm room poster or anything like that. There's an elevated aesthetic to the way the space has been designed, and it doesn't compromise the functionality or the flexibility of the space, but it kind of says, this is your space and you're aspiring to maturity at the same time. And I really like that, so thank you for doing that.
Yeah, thank you for highlighting that. And that was, I wanted to say that almost all that art was voted on and picked by teens. We set out a whole bunch of options for them, and they picked what they wanted, and we ordered it, got it framed. And I'm just really grateful that library administration was so supportive of that because it really changed the entire, like, feeling of the space from like having art that the teens looked at and didn't really much care for to stuff where like, I watch that show all the time. Thanks for putting that up. And it's a moment of conversation that you can have then with kids as well when you talk about shared interests there.
Yeah.
And also because we're librarians, there is a picture of a cat in an astronaut suit in the space. Thank you all.
I'm really grateful that you reach out and go to the schools, especially the high schools and middle schools, and keep those connections between you and the librarians there. I think that's very important. They need your support, and you need their support as well.
No, we're very, very happy that we can do that, and we're very grateful that the librarians have been so receptive to us showing up there.